Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Joint Troy City Council and Troy School Board Special Meeting for October the tenth, two thousand and sixteen. If you could have the roll call, Ms. Hickson?
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember McCow.
Here.
Mayor Protem Huntington.
Here.
President Jolker.
Here.
Ms. Edmonds.
Here.
Ms. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Hoff.
Here.
Mr. Malletti.
Here.
Vice President Schmidt.
Here.
Ms. Underwood.
Oh, Ms. Underwood is not able to be with us tonight. We'll be back.
Well, it's great to be back with the school board. Is this our third time that we've done this together, I think? And we typically alternate one time at the school board, then here at City Hall, and we decided that we were going to do it at City Hall this time, but this is your meeting. This is the school board's meeting, so I just want to say it's nice to be back with the school board. This is great for the city council to be able to sit at the table with the school board because we have such a great respect for the schools. Because of you, it makes us look better all the time, and we always hear from our residents why they moved to Troy, and that's because of the schools. So, having said that, I'll turn this meeting over to Nancy, and then, once we're done, we have five items here this evening that we'll cover, and once we get to number five, then we'll get back together, so I'll turn it over to the school board.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you, Dean. Appreciate it. You know, I just want to also echo Dean Sedman's that we feel that we've got a great partnership with the city. The city has supported us in, you know, many of the, you know, things that we needed help for, from, you know, police to traffic to traffic studies for busing, which seemed to involve a lot of it, like, and so, we certainly appreciate the support and feel that we have a great partnership, and by all means, you know, intend to keep that relationship. So, the first item we had on the agenda was introductions, and I guess maybe we can just quickly go through. I think most people know each other, but in any event, I know you have a new members to your council, which probably most of us know, but still will kind of officially do introductions, so how do we want to start?
Hi, my name is Ellen Hoderick. I'm finishing my third year as city council here. Proud Troy School District alumni parent. Both my kids have gone through the schools, and glad to be here with you.
Hi, Edna, and I'm on the joint board vacation.
Edna Abraham, and I'm finishing my first year on council, and a graduate of Hill, Larson, and Athens.
Oliver Fleming, secretary this year.
Ethan Baker, council member, in my first year.
Todd Malletti, I'm in my nine and a half, nine and a half years I've been on the board.
Carl Schman, and I'm finishing my fifth year on the board.
Home council in my third week.
Ed Pennington, I've been in city council for four years now. Had a business in Troy for forty-eight years, my family, and exactly right, we moved the kids to Troy when they were getting into the high school age because of the school system, and because we had such a great rapport with everyone in the city.
Dave Henderson, creeping up, I'm year six on city council. Also attended Morris, Larson, Smith, and Athens, graduated.
I'm Gary Hoff. I'm in my eighteenth year on the school board. I've served twenty-six years with the city of Troy in the police department, and several years riding with your esteemed mayor. In fact, I feel most comfortable sitting in this position because we rode together many years, so this is like coming back home, but it was an honor, and it is an honor, to have said that I have served the city well, and have now elected to continue my service in the role of a trustee with the school board, which is exemplary, both the city of Troy and their services, and our school board, which is another board.
Took my thunder. Dean Slater, I have the privilege of being the mayor. It's been kind of complicated for me since two thousand and nine, so I won't go into that, how I became mayor, but I spent
We all know.
I spent thirty-five years on the police department, and many of those years, as Gary said, with Gary, and we both made it through, so that's a good thing. I moved my, I chose to move my family into Troy in ninety-one, but I've been part of Troy since seventy-three, and I chose to bring my children in here to raise them when they got into school, and they graduated from Troy High, went through the schools, and I knew that's where they should go, so.
Great. And I'm Nancy Phillipard. If you're nine and a half years on the board, then I got to be coming up on nine, I think, nine years on the board.
Yeah, that's back when we did the elections in May.
Yes, yes, so, but it's certainly been a labor of love, and I'm so proud to be associated, you know, with this district, and, you know, my kids also went through Troy schools, and that's how we decided what community we were going to live in, so. So, I would like to then move on to the next item on the agenda, and I'll just preface it before I turn it over to Dr. Richard Macheski, our superintendent. You know, as many of you know, Dr. Macheski is starting his third year as our superintendent, and what a tremendous amount of vision and energy he has brought to the district, and we have been in process of really a strategic planning process that, much to my delight, looks at kind of simplifying what we are about, and doing a few things world-class, and taking things off of people's plates that aren't directly related to that mission. So, he and his team, you know, he reorganized the district in terms of his leadership team. He's focused, and, you know, many of his cabinet members are here tonight, he's focused everybody around teaching and learning for all students and customer service, which, again, for those of us that come out of a business environment, you know, customer service is, you know, pretty natural, but that was not necessarily a term that was used in a school district, and so, he has done, you know, he's been just a tremendous leader, and I would think it's fair to say, for the school board members sitting around this table, even those of us that have many years under our belt, we have never been more excited to be in the Troy School District than we are today, and so, I'm going to turn it over to Rich to take you through our journey to world-class.
Thank you, Dr. Phillipard, I appreciate that very kind, very kind introduction. None of, none of the work that we do in the school district is done without having a world-class team in place, and I want to start by mentioning those individuals that are here with us today. Mark Dodgeak, our deputy for teaching and learning. Chris Greifor, assistant superintendent for elementary instruction. Rick West is our CFO, and Carrie Birmingham, the Steve's left there, is our director of communications and strategic planning. Jordan Harris is our assistant superintendent for employee services, will be here momentarily. He was taking a group of constituents through some help here, work that we've been doing, so he'll be joining us here in just a few minutes, but, again, I want to thank you, Nancy, for that, for that very kind introduction, and Nancy said it all, that's exactly the work that we've been doing in the Troy School District. We know we were, we as a district are very good at what we do, but we knew if we were going to take that step to the next, if we're going to make that step to, not the steel turn, but move from good to great, there were some things that we needed to do, and part of what we needed to do was begin to simplify our work, recognizing that as we simplify our work, actually, our work becomes more complicated, and how we would go about that, we started a few years ago by rebranding ourselves as One Troy, and had an opportunity to be with the council the year that we kicked that off, and gave each of you a coffee cup. Hopefully, some of you still have that, those that are new, don't have one, and we'll make sure to get you one, but what we did provide you is that, our newest this year, our newest bit of hardware this year, these water bottles, because we want folks to remember that we are One Troy, and talk to you a little bit about our journey to world-class. As Nancy mentioned, it's been, we've been in the process now, going into our third year, and what we thought we'd share today is just a bit of our mission, vision, values, and our goals moving forward. Our mission is simple, it's ensuring learning for all members of the school community. That hasn't changed, because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about. It's about making sure that every child, every day, in every classroom, has access to the very best instructional practice, delivered by the very, the very best teachers, highly effective teachers, and it's done in a loving, nurturing environment. We believe that's what we deliver on a daily basis here in the Troy School District, so that, that mission has not changed. It's about every child, every day, in every classroom, and we're very proud of that. Our vision, that we kicked off at the beginning of this year, is simply to be world-class by two thousand and twenty, and as simple as that sounds, we know, again, that's very complex in terms of what does it mean to be world-class here in the Troy School District. So, that's our work this year, is defining what it means in the Troy School District to be world-class. So, to that end, we invited in August everyone to join us on that journey, all staff, whether they be our professional staff, our certified staff, our paraprofessionals, secretaries, whoever is part of One Troy. In August, we had them all together at Athens, and we invited them to come with us on that journey to world-class, and as a way of making sure that they would remember our mission, we asked that each of them carry this card with them during the course of the school year. Do you each have a card inside of your water bottle? You should have one in there, make sure you take it out, or it's going to get soggy. We ask you to also display this in some manner or another as you, as you, or as you come to understand the work of the Troy School District at a deeper level. The backside of that card goes directly to, so our vision is world-class by two thousand and twenty, that's what we plan on doing, and how we plan on getting there is through a very strict focus on our core values. Very, very proud of the work that's been done on our core values, because this is not something, this was birthed out of a process of about a year and a half, two years almost, where we had hundreds and hundreds of hours of meetings with individuals across the school district, teachers, secretaries, parents, board members, of course, members of the school community, constituent groups, that may not necessarily have kids in the school any longer, but have a stake in the success of our school district, and the end result of that was hundreds and hundreds of, again, hours of meetings and listening to what people said they wanted in their school district. The outcome of that, our teaching and learning department synthesized all that information, and they put that together in what we call our, we call it the hubcap, for lack of a better term, but these are our core values. Everything that we do on a daily basis needs to be through the lens of ours core values. It's about, it's about deepening learning for all kids. It goes back to that mission of ensuring learning for all. It's about focusing our direction in the school district, so the decisions we make have to be focused on, always focused on teaching and learning, what's in the best interest of every child, every day, in every classroom, and we do that through cultivating a collaborative culture within the school district. It's been real interesting, as we have worked to simplify what we do, how, again, how complex that work is, but we believe that it's, that it's the right work. Every decision that we make in the school district needs to be through the lens of these core values. This is how we do our work on a daily basis. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we've solved it, solved it yet, we haven't, but our work is about living into these core values on a, on a daily basis, so we rolled this out, we rolled those core values out last year. We revisited these core values with all staff at the beginning of this year, so that they clearly understand our mission, our vision, and these are values. It's as simple as that, and next, we move on to our goals phase. In teaching and learning, where we focus most of our attention, it's about setting ambitious outcomes for all students, and it's making sure that we have assessments in place at the classroom level that seek to meet, to tell us whether our students are meeting those ambitious outcomes. That's the work of teaching and learning. Nancy's already mentioned some of our other goals that we continue to focus on in the school district are around customer service. So, it's about being visible and being responsive. So, the team is expected on a weekly basis to be in buildings for purposeful conversations with folks. We did a cabinet meeting today at Martell Elementary, every month, twice a month, we take our show on the road, if you, if you will, and we have meetings in buildings, and so that we're in classrooms, and it's not just the superintendent being in classrooms, it's important that our business services individuals, our employee services individuals, our communications individuals are in our classrooms, because the decisions that they make on a daily basis have a significant impact on what happens in those classrooms. So, we want them to know those students, we want them to understand the environment that our teachers work within, and thus far, it's been very well-received throughout the school community. So, it's about those customer service values, again, being visible, being responsive, and then, last year, we added to that our focus on collaboration. It's not only one of our core values, it's what we demonstrate on a daily basis, so any, any important decisions that we make as a cabinet, as a central office, have to be vetted in some manner through a collaborative process, and that has, again, served us very well, in that we've been able to not only get a tremendous amount of input, but it also brings different, different focus to the decision-making. We believe that's extremely important. Then the last piece that we added this year, in an effort to define world-class, is networking. We did a book study with the Board of Education, I think we're on our fifth, fourth, or, we're on our fifth book now, but it was through our fourth book, that it dawned on us as an administrative team that if we're going to get better, we need to expand our network. We need to provide opportunities where we're interacting with folks outside of Troy, even in most, in some cases, outside of Michigan, that we're learning from the best. So, we're challenging ourselves, each department in the district, challenging ourselves to make networks with individuals that are doing things better than we are. They are, they have a demonstrated track record of doing things better than we're doing them, and we want to learn from them, so we're making connections with those individuals, we're making plans to meet with those individuals, to talk to those individuals, and we're going to learn from them. We're going to take all of that, come springtime, we're going to take all of that information that we've gathered, and we're going to synthesize all that information again. We're going to then turn around and share that with the Board of Education, share our learning, make our learning public, and then we're going to share that with the larger school district, because we want folks to know what we learned about what it means to be world-class, and then from there, we'll, we will set goals moving forward that will assure our meeting, that goal of being world-class, our vision of being world-class by two thousand and twenty. So, that's, mission, vision, values, goals, that I just shared with you, is the same presentation that I'm sharing with all buildings this fall, and I shouldn't say that I'm sharing, it'll be the team that's sharing it, because it may not be in all buildings, but it'll be Mark or Chris, we'll be sharing that message with all of our buildings this fall, so all of our staff, and then, we'll then be going to all of our PTO, PTA groups, our booster groups, and then we'll also be doing that to our constituent groups outside of the schools as well, because we want everybody to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. We recognize that a world-class school district means that people are still going to want to continue, or that people are going to even more want to move into the, into the city of Troy, to be a part of what we're doing in the Troy School District. To that end, I'm pleased to say that we have a record, record enrollment this year in the Troy School District, twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight-ish or so students, that's up about a hundred students over last year. We're very pleased with that. We believe that's because people outside of the city of Troy are hearing of the good things that, that we're doing as a school district, but more importantly, and also, that the services that you as a city council provide is world-class, I would say, and that message is resonating across the United States and beyond the United States, as we get folks that run into our office, literally run into our office, to enroll in this school district, and have heard about the Troy School District by word of mouth in countries around the world, and so, it's, it's pretty fabulous to hear that, and, again, it's a, it's a compliment to the, to the wonderful work that you're all doing. So, that's our mission, vision, values, and goals. We'll leave some time at the end, if anybody has any, any questions with respect to that. Did you want me to go to the next one, Nancy?
Yeah, I mean, unless anyone has some quick question right now. Our next intent was to go through our plans on property. The school district owns a fair amount of property that we've had for a number of years that was purchased in the event that we needed to expand our facilities, and we have been reviewing that property and have plans to sell it, and so, we want to go through our status of where we are on that, and then, Rich, I'm hoping that you'll also give the council a preview of why we're very excited about selling this property and the plans that we think we have for the money that we will procure from the sale.
Sure. Happy to do so, and actually, going to make this really simple, we have just one map, and so, you can just get a general sense for where we are. As Nancy mentioned there, the district actually owns five properties. There's one that's missing, and it's under that Oakland County box. I'll be darned if we couldn't figure out how to take that off. So, that's section twenty-three, I'll explain, I think you all are most familiar with that section, but section twenty-three is behind that blue box there. We're not hiding it, but it's, it's there. Again, five sections that the district has owned for an extended period of time, and Dr. Phillipard, as well as board members, tasked administration with getting a land valuation for those pieces of property, because they feel that the school district should not be in the business of owning property. That's not our core, our core mission of ensuring learning for all members of the school community. The, so, to that end, we engaged with a company in doing some land valuation. We have since gotten information back on each of those pieces of property. I'll go through them each just briefly. I will take section fifteen off of there initially. We got information back on section fifteen, that's the piece of property that the, the school district's central office, services building, and it, you see it kind of zigzags, it goes all the way back to Leonard. There's well more than half of that property is wetlands, and so, we were told basically that there's not a tremendous amount we're going to do with that, that property, so, right, but we're not, so we're not even looking at that piece of property. The piece of property that is furthest along in the valuation process is section twenty-three. That's the piece you don't see behind the box there. That would be the piece of property, section twenty-three is eighteen acres, it's south of Rain Tree Park, just on the, on the west side of John R. So, those of you that have been around long enough know that back in two thousand and nine, six, six through eight-ish, six through nine, I think, the school district was, was marketing that piece of property, had a purchase agreement on the piece of property, but because of some, because it got caught up for a period of time, the market went south, and so did the purchase agreement at that time, so, the district, the board at the time, very wisely said, we're just going to hold on to that piece of property. That piece of property right now is in the process of, we're preparing for an RFP, for that property to go out on the market. We hope that that will be done yet this, later this fall, okay? The other two pieces of property that are next in terms of being queued up, if you will, in terms of being prepared to write an RFP, would be section eleven. That's the piece of property that's north of Long Lake, it's east of John R. It actually sits, if you, you think about where Steel House is and that strip, it's behind there. That's a, section eleven is seventeen-acre piece of property. We're in the process of working with DEQ to determine whether, to determine the language necessary to move forward with an RFP. Our hope would be that it be somewhere around the fall of, after the new year, we would be prepared to have that piece of property ready to go for an RFP. Similar to section sixteen, if you see at the bottom left, section sixteen is on the west side of Lirinoi, that's right at the foot of Hart Street, basically, where the current bus garage is, that's right at the foot of Rain Tree, excuse me, of Hart Street. That is about twenty-acre, heavily wooded piece of property, that, again, we're waiting on DEQ, language from DEQ, that we will use to put together, if we've gotten all that information, put together an RFP, potentially determine whether that property will be saleable as well. The last piece of property is the one, it's the largest piece of property, section one, the northeast quadrant of the school district. That's over eighty acres of property. That is north side of Square Lake, between John R. and Dequender. You know, it is south of Sanctuary Lakes. That piece of property, the board is in the process of determining the ability to market that property for the purpose of conservation. The district is searching for the possibility that some or all of that property will be, will be able to be conserved for, in perpetuity, here in the school district. Now, that's not necessarily an easy thing to do, because those individuals that are looking to conserve property need capital in order to do that, so the district actually is looking for a way to develop some monies from that property whilst still then being able to set up a conservation fund, so that others could conserve that property for the district moving forward. We don't have any desire to, the board has not determined a desire to, to sell any piece, or any or all of the pieces of that property. So, that's section one, at the very northeast, so those are the, those are the five sections of property that the district owns right now, and that's kind of where we are in the process. Section twenty-three, we believe, will, will be on the market relatively soon. Sections eleven and sixteen, if the board were to determine, would be on the market after that. We don't expect to market section fifteen, and then section one will be marketed for the purposes of conservation moving forward. Now, the hopes would be that we could generate revenues from the sales of these properties for the purpose of, one of the challenges that we have as a district right now, our elementary schools are ninety-plus percent capacity. At the same time, we've also been, part of the reason they're at the level of capacity they are, number one, of course, our enrollment is at its highest point ever, but beyond that also, we have strategically been working to add sections for early childhood education throughout the district. The board was presented with some data a few years ago that indicated that upwards of over two hundred of our incoming kindergarten students were not, were coming to us without a, any kind of a formalized preschool experience, and we know in early education, early childhood education in particular, that early childhood experience is so important for those youngsters hitting the ground running when they come to kindergarten, and to have over two hundred or so of our students not coming to us without that was troublesome to the, to both administration and the board, so they tasked us with trying to find a way to address that. So, what we have done is strategically add sections of early childhood throughout the district. What that has done is put even more pressure on our elementary buildings, so just about every room in our elementaries right now is being used in some manner or another, and in some cases, to the point where we've had to displace our specials teachers, band, orchestra, art, classes like that, specialized classes like that, that we're still fortunate to be able to offer. So, what we have been doing at this point is talking to the board about the possibility of using some of the proceeds from sales of property to invest in an early childhood center here in the school district. We believe, based upon research that we've already We believe, based upon research that we've already done, that one of the characteristics of a world-class organization, a particular school district, is there is, there's a focus on early childhood education. Our goal would be that no child comes to kindergarten in the Troy School District without having had some form of preschool experience. And to that end, we're excited about the possibility of building an early childhood center, somewhere between 40,000 and 60,000 square feet, anywhere between 18 and 24 classrooms that would be dedicated to early childhood instruction. It's very, very exciting possibility that we could provide that for the residents in the city of Troy. Not only is it the right thing to do for kids, but we believe it's the right thing to do for a community that values, that is world-class itself. And that, we believe, would be a real draw to folks from outside of the Troy School District that would want to invest further in the Troy, in the city of Troy and the Troy School District. So, we're really excited about that possibility. We're in the, we're in the, kind of, the investigation phase right now. We've done some very preliminary sketch work with TMP, who's the district's architects right now, and we're excited to be able to report further to, to the folks in the city as we, as we move further into this process.
Questions, comments, thoughts on that?
It's exciting. We haven't had a new building in the school district since we, since New Baker was opened in 2006, I believe. And, so it's exciting. That leads actually right into our next. What have we been doing since we don't, since we don't have new buildings in the school district? Again, 2006 is, it's the newest building that we have here in the school district. Thanks, thanks to you all in here and the voters in the school district. In 2013, we were able to move forward with the successful passage of the, of $125 million bond issue, and passed overwhelmingly in the district. Very pleased with that, and as good stewards of the resources in the district, we wanted to make sure that we were spending that money wisely. So, we are at the end of our first series from the 2013 bond. Our bond, the $125 is set in three series. The first series was 58 million, I believe it was, is that about right, Rick? $58 million, and I'm pleased to tell you that we spent all of 58 million dollars. And it's not hard to do it, and we did tremendous, I believe, return on investment for the, for the voters in the Troy School District and for the residents. And wanted to share with you some of the, some of the more, more special, I guess, or eye appealing projects that have been done during the, during the first series of the bond. We opened the TACC, the Troy Athens Collaboration Center. Now, this is in the old auto shop wing of the building, which Mr. Gackley knows very well, he spent many, many years. We are actually maintaining a few of the bays towards the back of the building. Our maintenance operations folks maintain it for our grounds operation, but what we were able to do as a district with this is really spectacular. Of course, you're probably not going to see the inside, now are you? You have to come on over, and in fact, when we host the council next time, maybe we can have our meeting in this building. We'd certainly love for you to come and see. This old auto shop now seats 200, can seat up to 200 folks in chairs. We can seat up to 100 with tables. We have multiple presentation stations. It is a state-of-the-art facility. The north side of the building then is, or excuse me, would be the south side of the TACC, then also there are three smaller rooms, breakout rooms, one that will seat up to 40, another that seats 20-plus, and another one that seats about a dozen or so. And then there's another room off to, off to the side of that, which is a student collaboration room. Just very excited about this. What this has allowed us to do is provide more meeting space, provide collaboration space, in particular for the students at Athens, which they didn't have. The only space they had to bring multiple groups of students together is the media center. And now we have more state-of-the-art facility to bring folks together. Rich? Yeah?
Can you go back one?
Yes, sir.
You said you maintained a couple of bays, that's where all the garage doors were?
That's where all the garage doors were, right, so, further to your right here, two right bays, right?
Oh, that's where you go.
Yeah, yeah. Those of you that have driven by Troy High will notice that off the old social studies wing, we added four classrooms. Those are four classroom addition. It's a four classroom addition. It's a beautiful addition to that, to that building. As soon as those rooms were open, they were filled. And we're pleased to say that, again, making appropriate use of that space, fitting the architecture into, it's like it was there from the very beginning. So, we're really pleased with that space. Bowlin and Larson Middle Schools, if you haven't had a chance to see Bowlin Park or Larson, the new front entrances to those buildings are beautiful. When we added all new secure entrances to the elementaries and secondaries, we knew we couldn't maintain Bowlin and Larson the way they were because the main offices were in the middle of the building. So, we drew the main offices out to the outside of the building, put these covered canopies that really now draw you to the entrance to the building. If you remember Larson and Bowlin before, there were two kind of nondescript entrances on either side, and you didn't really, you had to know where to go. Now, when you pull up, you know exactly where to go. Draws you in, it's fabulous space. And what it's going to allow us to do then also is repurpose the old office space as well for collaboration space for students.
Is that Bowlin or is that Larson?
That is Larson.
I was going to say, I think it's Larson.
Yeah, that's Larson.
They're the same, anyway, I think.
Yeah, they're exactly the same.
Redoing the front entrance, what an noble idea.
Yeah. I won't say anything.
Well, I mean, the important thing is, people can't, they're in a secure area and do not have the ability to wander through the building. And staff don't have to keep answering the door.
Yeah, it's really, it's really fabulous.
It's a great look, too, I mean.
Yes. It really, it's world-class. I mean, that's where it should be. I wanted just also to mention to you, one of the oldest buildings in the district is Old Baker, now houses IA East and also houses the Troy Center for Transition, PCT. Those are 18 to 26-year-olds. We went through and replaced all of the windows in that building, all of the univentilators in that building, and did a number of other upgrades. Took the old pool lockers, that's the upper left-hand corner that you see, that's actually the old pool locker room. We had two new classrooms there. Band storage on the bottom, which is just kind of an alcove to, where you used to enter the old pool area. And then you can see kind of the new windows to the classrooms from, from the inside. Again, a snapshot of some of the real good work that's, that's been done. Smith Middle Schools, one of our smallest gym, we were able to enlarge that so we can get all of the student body in the Smith Gymnasium now. And that's important because when they do an all-school assembly, the fire marshal now will allow us to do that. He had a problem with that before. So, now he doesn't have a problem because we can, we can adequately fit everybody in that space. Upgrades to the Troy High and Athens lighting, that's really what we did, is new lighting in there, but again, it brings out the depth of the space which we were losing before with the, with the old lighting. And then we did a lot of site work this past summer, Athens, Troy High, Smith, and then Schroder. These are, these are tremendously expensive projects, but it's one of those things, you all know as a city, if you don't keep up with your roads, then it gets away from you and it costs you twice as much, three times as much to fix them. So, the bond has provided us an opportunity to extend the life of our sites moving forward. And so, that's just a handful of projects. We're going to start, we're going to sell Series 2 in May of this year. Of, May of '17, we'll sell Series 2. And Series 2 continues to be mechanical, lighting, all HVAC and electrical work across the district, as well as site work and technology and furniture and equipment. So, we've got about six more years to go in the current bond, and we're, again, very appreciative to, to the community for allowing us the opportunity to spend those monies wisely.
Looks like very impressive.
So, questions or any comments on anything that Dr. Macheski went through?
So, I guess we'll just go around the table for other, and I'll start with Mr. Mullery.
Uh, no, no other. Excuse me.
I did have a question. You talked a little bit about capacity with the elementary schools being at 90-plus percent. I've been asked a couple times, you know, with new developments coming into the city, are we at risk for, I mean, if a bunch of kids move into these new developments, especially property you're selling, for example, I mean, do we run any risk with the elementary schools being then over capacity and then we sold our property? I mean, I know it's deeper than that.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting because if you look at, if you look at our elementary, if you look at our elementary numbers over ti, over time, they stayed relatively flat, where we've seen significant increases in our middle school. So, we believe by strategically addressing the issue of early childhood, which does two things, it addresses the need to provide for an educational experience for kids, but also provides us an opportunity to remove some of those programs from, that are currently in elementaries and alleviate some of the, some of the, I won't call it overcrowding, but alleviate some of the challenges that we have right now as we work towards maximums in those buildings. And that's going to, that'll take some pressure off those elementaries so that in the event neighborhood enrollment rises, we can meet the needs within those neighborhoods. We feel comfortable that we're in a good position relative to that.
And keep in mind, in the city, we have only 24% of households have a child in the district, anyway. So, any new subdivision coming in, you're going to assume three-quarters of those houses will not have kids.
Does this want me? Any other?
No, just thank you for having us, though. This is nice.
Can I jump in line, because I've got to run to Pineak.
Oh, you have to run, too?
Yeah, to represent the school.
I know, I know you have another.
In Oakland, so I was going to say, so, thank you. I wanted to find out all about the trails and pathways and see where we're at, and I'm willing to catch up on that later, so, thank you.
Oh, I thought you were going to bring up sidewalks.
I, well, I want to see if that was tied into connecting, what I brought up two years ago, about how, if we've made any progress at connecting all of our dead-end sidewalks and down, since that applies to all kids, but one of you can ask that question.
All right, thank you. Ms. Abrams, any other?
Yeah, follow-up question on the Early Childhood Education Center, large facility that you're starting to sketch out. Where would it be located?
Well, that's where, board has not made any decisions relative to that. So, our task administratively now is to bring back some options. Where we could successfully house a facility of approximately that size. And then also, we need to get some financials about what's that going to cost, and then, and then how do we go about making recommendations to the board as to how that could be paid for. So, we, there's much more work that needs to be done, but we know we need, we need a site of approximately six acres, six to eight acres in order to house a facility of that size.
But our intent really is to look at using existing property.
Yeah, it certainly wouldn't make sense to sell the land that you want to build.
Right, we need that money.
Yes, we do.
I'd like to say bravo to Chief Mayor and the Police Department for talking turkey to the clowns because it's been a little bit unsettling to us to have this, these sorts of shenanigans going on in the city, specifically in the school district. And I'm very pleased that you have, have it under control.
Ms. Horner?
She just said, "That was awesome." And I think that just is a testament to the collaboration between the communication, between the city and the district. And as a resident, even wearing my council hat, I value that tremendously. And thank you for the update on where the bond dollars are going. When I ran for council three years ago and I was knocking doors, they actually talked more about that than I did even myself, and had several people observe, you know, "Are you running?" Or, "Yeah, I am running, but don't bother voting for me if you're not going to vote yes for the bond." And they'd say, "Are you serious?" And I said, "Yeah, I grew up in a community that refused to fund its schools properly, and without that, the rest of the community falls apart." So, I really value the strategic thinking that you all are putting in, in anything and everything we can do on the city side to backstop you, collaborate with you. We're here for you. It goes without saying, but I think we should say it out loud in a meeting like this, but we get it and we really appreciate the work you're doing.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I know you have to go, too. Are you, are you good for time?
Yeah, I'm, I'll just finish around the room and then I, then I will have to leave. But, did you have any roundtable or?
I don't have any, I think it was a great presentation. It was very self-explanatory, really. It's really nice to see, you know, what's going on in the school district, and it's great to be part of, part of it. I do have one little plug that if I could do here. I've been asked to do this. We have a Freifel 5K, and if we could get the school district to help, help promote this for us, we think it's a great family fun run, and if you could host it in your schools for us and maybe put it on your webpage or do some stuff for us.
Yeah, or maybe, when does school life come out next?
Would be greatly appreciated.
That's in November.
November, we have a little.
Yeah, this is October 23rd. But, some of us, Fit People will be running, or walking. But if we could just get the school district to help promote it, it'd be.
Mr. Hoff?
The excitement and enthusiasm that I'm sure you all felt tonight is something that we as a board are privileged to get each time we have a workshop or a board meeting. They're just not dry, they're exciting, as you heard tonight. And this enthusiasm isn't just limited to this room. We all can take it to the next level, to our neighborhoods, to our community, to the people who are watching on cable cast. This is no fluke. This is what happens at each board meeting that we have and at each workshop. And the enthusiasm that we have builds this community so much stronger in each way that it is, and it always has been, a privilege to live in Troy, and this is just another example.
Mr. Henderson?
Being a Realtor, it's critical that we have great schools, and that's one of the things that the people, every, every client that comes into Troy with, with a move brings that up. So, we appreciate everything the school board and all employees of the school district do for us. I have four grandkids at Castello now, so they're going to be pulling their hair out, but it's, it's critically important for a grandfather to know that their kids are going to be educated properly. And kudos to Dr. Macheski, too. I see him frequently at Chamber of Commerce events, so I know that the outreach, you know, from your standpoint in the business community is well-received, and I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming. Great presentation.
Well, then, I'm, I'm so, I'm new to city council, so this is all kind of new for me, but, you know, I have a lot of experience with budgets, and I know that it's, it's difficult to select what you're going to do first, and, you know, it's really well-done, great presentation, and it looks like the money has been spent wisely, so job well-done there.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Kishnik's here, maybe, I don't know if he wants to say anything. I know he has a lot of his staff here, too. Brian, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, we'd love to say something. It's been great to, I was, it's been really good to work with Mr. Macheski, Dr. Macheski. It's been a great experience, and we can, we can call on moments' notice in working with the schools and the school resource officer. You know, everything seems to go very smoothly, whether it's from special events to just administrative-type things. So, it's, it's a world of help to have that relationship.
So, I am going to have to excuse myself because I have to be downtown. We have brought copies of school life, I'm sure you're all familiar with this because it's in buildings and community center places throughout the district, but we did bring some copies, and I will try to bear to you to conclude the meeting.
Conclude our agenda. Thank you, thank you, Hanson.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, it was great, great opportunity. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Brian said and Dave about Dr. Macheski, I just want you to know, we put together the Troy Community Foundation earlier this year, and it's, it's going well, and now we have a, a library is, is going to be taking off with their endowment, and one of the first persons that we went to to ask if they would be part of that was Dr. Macheski. And we approached him, and he said, "Of course." So, he, he not only is your superintendent, but he's part of our community. We, as Dave said, we see him all the time at all of the events, and thank you for doing that, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Unless there are any other comments from council or the board, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak this evening? Once again, thank you so much. It's always great to meet with the board. We are adjourned. Thank you.